Good evening. This public hearing conducted by the Committee on Appropriations and Judication will now come to order. Notice of this public hearing was disseminated to all local media outlets via electronic format on November the 12th, with a second notice provided on November the 17th. Notice of this hearing was also made known on the Guam Legislature's website. For the viewing audience, I apologize for the 15-minute delay in starting. We have an absolutely packed house tonight. People came in to testify on this bill, and we have a full room plus overflow outside, and we were waiting for everybody to finish signing up. So that was the reason for the delayed start. We have one item on today's agenda. It's Bill 2-33 LS, introduced by myself, an act to add a new Article V to Title IV, Chapter 8 of the Guam Code annotated, "to create a new hybrid retirement system with mandatory participation by government of Guam employees hired after December 31st, 2015, with optional participation for defined contribution systems participants who elect to transfer to the new hybrid plan in accordance with regulations to be promulgated." Before I have the first set of witnesses come up, I really do think that it's important that I, with full transparency, though I love the fact that it's being referred to as my hybrid bill, and it would be intellectually dishonest to claim credit for this. This was the work product of a very diligent and intelligent retirement fund, Board of Trustees, who worked over the last at least 10 years. And it really was an effort that was pushed by the late Senator Ben Pangolinan. He and the retirement fund exchanged at least a dozen iterations of this bill. And this bill was the one that the retirement fund finally came to say they could support with their fiduciary duty. And so after Senator Ben passed a year ago, I had the honor of introducing this bill. But I really do believe that everybody should remember that for over 10 years, Senator Ben Pangolinan was the one that recognized that many of you that were working in the government of Guam system under the defined contribution plan would not have sufficient funds with which to retire. And he, with the retirement fund Board of Trustees, had been working diligently for the last 10 years in various iterations of this bill. So I want to acknowledge the work of the retirement fund and Senator Ben Pangolinan, and ask the retirement fund Board of Trustees now come forward, make their presentation so that the employees understand what this bill is about, and understand why this is the one plan that all of you are willing to support. So if I could invite Mr. Chairman, Speaker Joe T., and whoever else you want to invite up with you. You can bring all your board members, or whoever wants to come join you, your financial If you would all introduce yourselves, and then whoever's going to make the first presentation, make the presentation. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for being persistent in trying to get this bill through. As you said, it's been over close to 10 years, been working on it, and we're talking about a plan that has been in existence since 1995. So that's almost 20 years. If you can try to understand the dimension of the problem that we're facing now, the core of government employees are now in D.C. employees. There's only less than 1,000 members who are still in the old plan. So after they're all gone, then the government people have to depend on employees under the D.C. And say by 20 years, most of them are now thinking of retirement. And they're now looking forward, what do they have? What kind of plan do they have in D.C.? And what you have now is that the government of Guam and the people of Guam face what kind of employees that you want to have to provide continuity, provide all the expertise that is necessary, which was the core of the very fundamental belief when we established the DB in 1950. Because in 1950, it was that same challenge. So now we're faced with a second challenge. The people of Guam now got to look upon, who is going to serve them? Are they going to be served by people that may not have certain continuity? They may not be thinking, you're talking now about in 20 years, about employees that are now looking forward for retirement, and then they look upon what kind of plan they have. And I think this is why it's more than urgent that we have to act on it now. We, the people of Guam, want good and reliable employees. You can't forever think that you have reliable employees or employees that know, have actually no future for their family, or security in a sense. After they serve, they start looking around. And then you lose, you're going to have experience in the next 10, a high turnover of people that's not going to stick around, and then you're going to lose your highly professional, good qualified people looking for something, because now they'll be looking for where they can have their security retirement. That, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, and members and members, consider this. We don't have the luxury of time anymore. 20 years in D.C. alone, about, basically, 95% of the employees of GovGuam are in the D.C. plan. They have no future for their survivor benefits. They have no, actually, all they can do is hope they have money accumulated to pay for their funeral plan. And this is something that we have to realize. We have to recognize that. And the sooner we recognize, the way we have been talking about it for the last 10 years, 15 years, so to speak, fine. But I think the time is now. We cannot afford to stick around. Otherwise, you're going to have a government that is with staff employee that you can't rely on. You won't have any continuity at all. Thank you, men. Any details of these plans have been worked, have been actually worked by members of the retirement board. Let everybody here do their own presentation. I will bow out, because I think they have worked long in the detail. And as I said, we have to get this plan working, one way or the other. Otherwise, just tell them goodbye. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Who is going to?
Good evening, Vice Speaker Cruz and distinguished members of the Appropriations Committee. My name is Lena Leon Guerrero. I'm a trustee and the secretary for the Government of Guam Retirement Fund Board of Trustees. I want to thank all of you for giving us this opportunity to make this presentation on behalf of the board in support of the hybrid plan. Across the nation and across sectors, whether it's public or private, there's a lot of talk about retirement plans. Regardless of where they are, what state, whether it's a city or municipality, the fundamentals of retirement plans are the same. Adequate funding, plus contributions, plus savings, that are pooled and invested well, will result in annuities that provide retirement security. Nationally, the trends are in the news in terms of Social Security. We see that they're facing challenges in terms of funding and benefits. For government pensioners, like our government of Guam retirees, they're subject to a windfall provision that reduces their Social Security benefits. Defined benefit plans, those are the most common plans in public pensions. The plan sponsors are required to pay for benefits as the plan proceeds. Defined contribution plans, like ours, those are retirement savings plans. Typically, they're coupled with Social Security or a pension plan. There are cash balance plans out there that guarantee an interest rate on employee contributions, and those result in a cash balance at the end of someone's career, service career. And hybrid plans, those are becoming much more popular, I think, as the nation is looking at options to best serve their employees and their organizations. So what are the retirement options on Guam? We face the same challenges. That's why we're here again tonight. And we've worked over the last 12 months with the legislature, as well as other stakeholders, to consider some options in how we can best service our D.C. members. So what are some of the objectives and the issues that have been raised? For the Government of Guam Board of Trustees, we had two primary objectives. The first was to provide retirement security for our employees. And the second was to come up with a plan that was cost neutral for the government of Guam. During the last year, as we've talked with other members in the community, in the private sector, and different segments of the government, other issues were raised. Employee contribution rates, trying to make them similar to those that are in the Social Security plan. Considering Social Security to allow for an ease of movement for the workforce between public and private sector without the loss of benefits that comes with the windfall provision. Avoiding the future of an unfunded liability, and the ability to pay for the benefits promised. Those concerns reflect our history with the defined benefit plan, the promise of benefits that didn't come along with payment that have resulted in an unfunded liability. So while we keep those concerns in mind, what is the hybrid plan? It's a new alternative retirement plan for government of Guam employees. It is a hybrid in terms of it combines a defined benefit with a deferred compensation, often referred to as the 457 plan. Both employees and the government of Guam invest in our employees' retirement. It's an affordable plan with a lifetime annuity. It would be optional for D.C. members. It's mandatory for new employees, as per Bill 2. But again, as discussions have unfolded over the last several months, there are options that could be considered for new members. Why replace the D.C. plan? The current balances that are in place may be insufficient for our D.C. retirees. Current D.C. contributions, or the average balance for an employee over 55, is less than $50,000. Our D.C. members may be forced to work longer or forego retirement. Or upon retirement, D.C. members may deplete their savings and be forced to work, forced to seek public assistance. Our retirement plans need to last a lifetime. The proposed hybrid plan is designed just to do that. Provide a lifetime benefit for our employees. Avoid additional costs for the government of Guam, while also increasing the security ratio of the trust fund. It avoids additional costs for community and taxpayers, and retirees, and it avoids the fact, the possibility of retirees having to go on public assistance after a full career in public service. Bill 2 can achieve these goals. And while it's true, again, the retirement board has worked with others, it's clear from the roundtable, from last year's public hearings, two things. One, something needs to be done for our D.C. members. And secondly, all the alternatives should be considered. So there have been several meetings to explore Social Security as an option. There'd be no government of Guam unfunded liability with Social Security. The employee contribution would only be 6.2%, which is the same as the private sector. In the discussions, there was consensus, though, that Social Security would probably not be viable, would probably not be viable for most of our current D.C. members, because they wouldn't have enough time to accrue the benefits. If you recall, Social Security requires that you work at least 40 quarters or 10 years before you can accrue benefits. Social Security changes to allow for us to carve out government employees is going to require congressional action. So Social Security may be best for our future employees. So what do we do in the meantime? We can consider a transition plan, such as a cash balance plan. Another option is something called an enhanced D.C. plan. Whichever plan we consider, all approaches are coupled with an individual savings in a 457 plan. And why is that? Because the fundamentals of a retirement plan include adequate funding, contributions, and savings. So let's consider the options that are before us. And in this table, what we're going to look at are comparing the plan costs and benefits for our employees, but we're also going to look at the cost for the government and how it affects the contribution rate. So if you look in the first column, we're looking at the current D.C. plan. We see that the employee's cost is 5%. GovGuam puts in 5% for a total of 10%. If you look at Social Security plus, we tried to match, again, we included the 457, so it's 6.2% for the employee plus one. So that's how you get the 7.2%. The government's cost, the employer's cost, is going to be 6.2, for a total of 13.4%. We wanted the cash balance plan to be similar to Social Security, again, so that everybody is using the same numbers. So it's 6.2 for the employer, 7.2 for the employee. The last two columns look at the hybrid, in terms of trying to make it comparable to either Social Security plus or the cash balance plus. So in the second to the last column, we're looking at bringing the employee cost to 6.2 plus one. That's that 7.2%. And we just reallocated then what the employer's cost would be, and that comes up to 4.9. So you can see the totals for the hybrid, modified, and the hybrid in Bill 2, the total is 12.1%. So those are the costs, right? And when we talk about the costs, that's the cost of the plan. What does it cost the employee in terms of her paycheck? So for an employee at grade H1 earning $26,000, currently, she gets $50.48 taken out of her paycheck every two weeks. Under Social Security plus, and the cash balance plus, and the modified hybrid, that cost goes up to $72. For the hybrid under Bill 2, the deduction for that employee is $106. How does that translate to benefit? Obviously, we can see the difference in costs. What kind of benefits will that employee get? At age 65, upon retirement, based on certain assumptions, it's 2%, I think, 2.5% of compensation growth over time. That employee will yield a balance of close to $600,000. But in terms of what you can get for an annuity, it's $3,000 a month. That's about $36,000 a year, under the current D.C. plan. Under Social Security, at less than $3,000 a month, again, it's about $36,000 a year. Under cash balance, there's a huge increase. At $4,200 a month, that's an annual salary, annuity of $51,000. And likewise with the hybrid, both modified and under Bill 2. The benefits are higher than they would be in the current D.C. plan. The last line that we look at is the government contribution, contribution rate. And what is that? There's a distinction between the cost of a plan and the government's contribution rate. The cost of the plan is how much it costs to administer the plan, what it costs to the service benefits. This contribution rate includes that cost, plus the cost of the unfunded liability. The government of Guam offered benefits to its defined benefit plan members, but didn't pay for it upfront. Instead, the government of Guam chose to pay for it over time. There's a liability to the trust fund. It started at 1.7 billion, it's down to 1.4 billion. And the government of Guam has chosen to pay that off in regular installments as a percent of payroll. So the contribution rate allows the government of Guam to pay that debt every two weeks as a percent of payroll. And that's what this contribution rate refers to. It is the cost to the government of Guam, their government cost, plus the debt that they owe to the trust fund. Under the current D.C. plan, the contribution rate right now is 28.16%. Under Social Security plus, that contribution rate would go up to 31.3%, the same as the cash balance. Under the modified hybrid plan, it would be 30.4%. Under hybrid, Bill 2, it actually is less, the lowest of all. It's 28.15%. I know that's a lot of numbers to look at. At least this time, you get the chart up on the board, you don't have to just listen to me. But again, it's best for us to look at all the options before us in terms of, what we're looking at is the cost to the employee, as well as their benefits. We look at the cost to the government, as well as the contribution rate. So we're back to the basic question, can D.C. members afford to retire? We think that for current D.C. members, we should consider the hybrid plan. It provides income security, it's cost neutral for the government of Guam, and it caps the unfunded liability, if you limit it to the current D.C. members. For new employees, you could consider a cash balance plan, plus the savings in 457. Again, this would provide some income security, it would mitigate unfunded liability, although at a somewhat higher cost to the government of Guam. When Social Security is available, Social Security would become the future baseline plan, plus savings in the 457. Clearly, there's income security, although it's less than the hybrid, than the cash balance plan, but there's no GovGuam unfunded liability. It would be similar to what is present in the private sector, and it would allow for the easy workforce movement without any loss of benefits. All these options point to the fact that it's time, right? It's time for us to take care of our D.C. members. Vice Speaker Cruz, we could pause at this point in time to take questions, or if you'd like, we could present the details of the hybrid plan in terms of eligibility and what's covered. It's really your preference.
Why don't, at this point, because there are so many employees here, I think it's imperative that they understand what the benefits or the drawbacks would be. Well, whatever. I mean, I'm just being fair about it. Whatever the pluses and negatives, they should hear it, and so should the government employees that are listening. So if we could take some time to describe the plan, and so that they understand it, because I know a number of them have called my office and tried to get an explanation, and not been really, been able to give a very good explanation. So I'm hoping that you will be able to explain it to them, and they'll have a much better idea. And then we will, I know, there are some questions. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Speaker. I'm Paula Blas, the Director of the Government of Guam Retirement Fund. There was a handout that was emailed to not just your office, but to a lot of the employees within the government. Basically, the hybrid plan is designed right now to provide some sort of a floor benefit for employees that are currently in the D.C. plan. What that floor benefit consists of is the number of years of service that they've actually contributed, you know, to the government of Guam, at a benefit rate of 1.75% for every year of service. Coupled with the hybrid, I mean, the defined benefit, is a retirement savings plan. Now, it's mandatory that they participate in this at a minimum of 1%. They can put more in it if they want to, but what this does, it actually allows them to save more for retirement, since the hybrid plan is actually designed to just provide a floor benefit. The plan is designed to be mandatory for all new employees, but like Lena said, there are other options that we can explore regarding new employees. But for the current D.C. members, it is optional for them to move into the hybrid plan. Their members' contribution rate, like she showed earlier, is a 9.5%, but this is pre-tax. So this allows them the tax benefit, or the tax deferred. 1% pre-tax contribution is also deducted from their base pay that would go into the 457 plan. As I stated earlier, the annuity is actually based on a benefit rate of 1.75% for every year of government service. There is a minimum benefit of $1,200 per annum, and the maximum benefit is 85% of their three highest salaries, the average of the three highest. They can use their sick leave and convert that to service as well. Now, for disability, anyone who is eligible for disability, the benefit for that would be 50% of the average of their three highest salaries as well. This plan provides them with a survivor benefit, unlike the D.C. plan. So their annuities, any survivors, if they're married, will receive 60% of their annuity. If they have minor children, their minor children would receive up to $2880 per year. They also are, will be entitled to the 1,000 death benefit, the lump sum death benefit. Now, there's two ways that an individual can actually retire. They can retire with an un-reduced annuity at the age of 65, or they can retire at the age of 55 with 25 years of service, but that actually penalizes them for every year that they're not 65, at a rate of 6% per year. Vesting is five years. They need five years with the government. Anybody in the D.C. plan right now that started since 1995 will be automatically vested. There is a refund provision that's linked to the Article 1. For those who have five years of service, they can actually refund contributions, apply for a service retirement without survivor benefits, but they have to be at the age of 60. Or apply for a service retirement annuity with survivor benefits, but they have to be 65 at that time. The way that the service credits will be calculated would be done actuarially. So currently, the account balance in an individual D.C. member's account, the, I believe the actuarial calculation is at 5.46% of their balance, that would be transferred to the hybrid plan. And that would be able to give them the number of years of service that they've actually worked for the government. Anything more than that would go into their 457 account. So the employer contribution that was actually put into their D.C. plan, all of that would have to be transferred to the hybrid plan, because that's just the way that the numbers work, so that this ends up being cost neutral. Those are just the highlights of the plans, the details of the plan. In terms of the rules and regs will be promulgated once this actually is passed and becomes enacted. But I'd like to say at this time that if there are any changes to the plan, that the fund actually get consulted prior to its actual passing.
I'm sorry. Any of you want to add anything further? If not, then I'll take your opinion and suggestion, and have some of my colleagues pose a few questions, and we'll try to keep it to a minimum so that we can get the rest of the people heard. If anybody has any questions that they want. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Could you please pull up the screen where we're looking at the comparison, so we can have a discussion on the comparisons? And also, we'll discuss this with respect to what we were talking about earlier in terms of the benefits for the employees, so that we can just have some clarity. So up on the screen, looking at the last two columns, we have two different versions of the hybrid. One is at a 7.2% employee contribution rate, and the second is at a 10.5% employee contribution rate. And just to make sure it's absolutely clear for the employees present, the plan that the retirement fund is proposing is the one at the end, the last column. So we're proposing that the employee's cost is going to go from $50, which is the first column, the 1, 2, 3, fourth row, to $106. Just so that all the employees are clear, their paycheck is going to have twice as much taken out, more or less, with the hybrid that the retirement fund is proposing. And that's at a $26,000 salary. So if you make $52,000 So if you make $52,000, right now you have $100 taken out, but if we adopt your plan, you're going to have $200 taken out. And then you triple that if you make $75,000, you quadruple that if you make $100,000. Okay? Just so we're very clear to the employees, because in the original presentation of the comparison, I just want the employees to fully understand that what the retirement fund is proposing is the one that's going to take out the most from the employee's paycheck at the last column there. So for those of you present and those of you listening, if you make $26,000, you're going to have twice as much taken out of your check from your behalf. The government's not contributing that. If you make $52,000, it's going to take out $200 bucks and so on and so forth, just so that that's absolutely clear. That's the per-pay period. That's bi-weekly.
No, what is that, bi-weekly pay?
Oh, $26,000 salary? You just divide that by 26 pay periods, so about $1,000. So if you make $1,000 every two weeks, you're going to have, instead of 5% taken out, 10.5% so $100.
Just to be fair, Senator, the benefit also go up?
Oh yeah, we'll get to the benefits in just a second. And I wanted to, before we get into the benefit, just kind of jump down to the last row on the government contribution side, because those two figures on the last column, the 1.6 and the 10.5%, those are coming out of the employee and employer on a per paycheck basis. But the 28.15% down there at the bottom, that's a total government contribution to pay off all of the liabilities that are going to be incurred with the adoption of the plan. So the additional $100 million liability, in order to make sure it's not unfunded, in order to make sure it's fully funded, that's going to be included in the 28.15%. So what's our contribution rate right now? So how are we taking on an additional $100 million in liability but having zero impact on the unfunded liability, on the liability portion at the bottom?
If you look at the far-right column under employer cost, the 1.6% is the cost for the ongoing benefit for the hybrid plan. What's missing from that is that contribution towards the $140 million unfunded liability that would be created. The contribution to pay off that $140 million is 3.4% from the employer. So the total employer cost is the sum of the, for the hybrid is the sum of the 1.6% plus the 3.4%, so that's equivalent to the current 5% that's going for the DC plan. And so that's what makes the total contribution comparable to what's being paid now.
Now, right now, though, that employer cost is going to the matching for the employee. So aren't we missing an additional 5% on the first column?
Well, no, that first column would go away, assuming everyone transfers to the hybrid plan.
So if everybody transfers from the DC to the hybrid, the 5% that right now is the employer contribution to employees is going to go instead to paying the unfunded liability of the, or to make it a funded liability, the 140 million?
Right. Yeah. So of that 5% that's currently going to the DC plan, 1.6% would go to pay for the ongoing costs of the hybrid, and 3.4% would go to pay towards the unfunded liability.
I'm trying to find that missing 5%. So that 5% there on the first column that is priced into the 28.16 at the bottom is also priced into the 28.15% at the end, but when you go up to the employer cost, it's only 1.6. So how did the GovGuam total contribution balance when the top column doesn't balance?
Well, the top row is for a hypothetical new employee. So for a new employee, there would be no unfunded liability. That employer cost for that new employee would be 1.6%, but overall, considering the hybrid unfunded liability, would add the additional 3.4% to bring that up to 5%.
So that's, these are new employee numbers, but on existing employee numbers, we would need to actually, in order for it to balance, we need to put that 3.4% down there on the bottom of the GovGuam contribution on the last column?
Well, the bottom row includes all employees, current and DB members and everybody. It's only the top section to make it a comparison against the social security and cash balance.
No, I understand, but do you see where I'm coming from? I'm trying to balance the bottom row with the top row. If the bottom, if the bottom row on the far left and the bottom row on the far right are both balanced at 28.16 and 28.15, and that includes the GovGuam's total contribution, and if that's 5% on the top row is part of the government's contribution, where's the missing 3.4% on the last column?
Well, it's included in the bottom row, it's not included in the top row.
I'm just trying to reconcile how we can increase our unfunded liability by 140 million and have a lower employer cost.
The 140 million is paid for by the 3.4% that's missing from the far-right column on the top row. So for, the top row is only for new employees. For current employees, there's an additional 3.4% that's being paid, and so that's how it balances to the...
But if the cost of our current liability is already 28.16%, and assuming we convert this tomorrow, the current liability should still be 28.16%. But now we're adding 140 million on top of that. So how are we paying for that extra 140 million?
You're paying for that because instead of 5% going to the DC plan, only 1.6% is going for the ongoing costs of the hybrid plan. So that frees up 3.4% to pay towards the $140 million unfunded liability.
But how did the total liability go down from the first column to the second column by that 3.4? There's 3.4% missing in the whole equation is what I'm trying to say.
You know, Senator, maybe, Rich, if you construct the 28.15, think of that. So if you didn't have the 5% under the current DC, that 28.16 would be 5% less than that, right? So if you, and that's basically the unfunded DB liability today.
Okay, let me try and rephrase. Let me try and rephrase, because this is where I'm trying to reconcile it all. The first column right now is status quo, right? That's where we are at right now. Current liability to the government of Guam is 28.16%. Current contribution of the employer is 5%. Now, what you're saying is you want to adopt the last column, you want to slash the government contribution rate by 3.4%, you want to increase the government's unfunded liability, and you want to fully fund it at $140 million. So we're adding $140 million from column 1 to column 4 or 5, but the government's total contribution is remaining the same, and the employer cost is going down. I'm not, I'm just not reconciling those numbers. How do we have status quo at 28.16 liability, take on another $140 million in liability, and still have a 28.15% contribution rate with the employer cost going down on the top row? The employer cost has got to go up. I mean, somewhere, somehow, if we're adding 140 million onto the liability, the government's contribution rate has to go up.
Well, you have to remember that the first row is the employer cost for just the ongoing benefits. It does not include the employer cost for the unfunded, for the hybrid. The reason it's presented that way is because for social security, social security does not create an unfunded liability, but there is a 6.2% ongoing cost. The same with the cash balance plus plan. It would not create an unfunded liability, but this ongoing cost would be 6.2%. So for an apples-to-apples comparison with social security and the cash balance plan, we wanted to show the ongoing costs of the hybrid plan for a typical new employee, which would be 1.6%. In reality, the employer is still paying an additional 3.4% for the hybrid unfunded liability, which is missing from the top row, but it is included in the bottom row. So if you think of the bottom row, the far-right bottom row, if we did not include the hybrid unfunded liability, the 28.15% would be lower by approximately 3%. But because of the hybrid, the $140 million, now it goes back up to be comparable to the current.
Okay, I'm going to do what I learned in math class, and I'm going to reverse the equation now, because it should balance if you reverse the equation. So then, if it's 28.16%, right, and that includes, we're looking at the first column, and that includes the 5% employer cost, you take 28.16% and you minus the 5%, and that should give us the current unfunded liability that we're now paying down, which is 23.16%. That's right now, 23.16%, right? Now, if you take 23.16% and you minus it by the 28.15%, I'm just going to give me a second here to get my calculator on. I'm sorry, I always have a, I always break out my calculator.
You have it.
Right. But the 5% is not on the 1.6.
No, no, yes, exactly.
Take that 5%, Senator, and say, how do you make the equivalent? The equivalent is, as Rich says, you add in the 1.6, and then you add in the 3.4. That gives you the 5 you just took out.
No, but we should have 4.99 on the employer cost, but all we have is 1.6 on the employer cost. And so you minus 4.99 minus 1.6, and that takes us to 3.4. So where is the 3.4, the missing 3.4?
No, I'm sorry. That's the unfunded.
That is the unfunded liability. So the cost, then, the employer cost is, you have to take that 3.4, and you got to add it back to that 28.15. Otherwise, we need to place the 3.4.
Back to the 28.
Okay, let me, let me...
The cost is, if that's for the defined benefits, it exists. I think that...
Right now, the bottom, the bottom row, the first column, is status quo, 28.16.
But it's for the defined benefit by law, isn't it? To pay off the liability over a certain set of time.
Right.
So it really, it doesn't matter what those numbers are up there, because the effect will be there, but it won't be as much as you would think. The adjustment there, you know, will adjust according to proportionately. But the big picture is that, that by law is what the government has to pay to erase their unfunded liability over a certain period of time.
What's missing is a role, what GovGuam is now paying in percentage terms, which would be 23.16 under the current subsidy, and would go up to 26.45 under Plan 2.
Right. That's the 3.4 that we're missing.
Right. And the 3.4 is simply to, as the hybrid plan...
Okay. So the chairman's asking me to continue, so I'll just continue. Now, I wanted to discuss this monthly benefit at 65, the $4,232 that we're looking at there under Hybrid Bill 2. And I got this Milliman report, and I apologize, because I was only able, I only received it at 3:00 this afternoon, so I was, I had to just really, it took me a lot of effort to analyze it so quickly. But I wanted to kind of go over, I wanted to go over some of the assumptions here that are leading us to these conclusions. Now, the first one is that the comparisons between the hybrid and the other options that are on the table is based on a 2.5 or a 3.5% compounded increase in compensation throughout the term of employment.
That's right.
Okay. Now, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't get a 2.5% compounded increase in our pay perpetuously in the government. Is that, am I correct in that? We don't get, we don't get 3% increases every year from the day we're hired to the end of time? On average? So is it a 2.5 or is it a 3.5%?
For this exhibit on the screen, we show, we reflect a 2.5%.
Because if I can, because my wife's a government of Guam employee, and I remember, you know, we always used to be so happy she got her increment every year, but then as you go on up in steps, and as you put in years of service, your increment begins to space out over time. You get less of an, you don't get an increment every year, it becomes every two years or every so many years, right? Am I correct on that?
That's correct. After 10 years...
Could you turn on the microphone?
That's correct. After 10 years, it spaces out to 18 months, and then it's...
Oh, sorry.
After 2 years, okay. So it's, 10 years is the break.
Right.
But again, you know, the 2.5% is applied across the board, so whatever percentage Rich used for his calculations, it's similar for each of the examples that are up there. So I assume we could be slightly more precise, but that would take a lot of effort. So I think the 2.5% assumption is reasonable, given the experience that, you know, that you typically see in the government. I mean, that worked for us at UOG, so...
And this is a 40-year projection, and so over the course of 40 years, we would assume that salaries would keep pace with inflation, and long-term inflation predictions are around 2.5% per year.
Okay. You could be more precise, but it'd be a lot of noise, Senator. You know, you get people coming and going, and then how do you take that into account as well? So there's a lot of noise that goes with it.
And the reason why I'm asking is when I looked at the document that you provided to, that I got at 3:00 today, when you compare and analyze them, the people who are projected from age 25 to age 62, or 65, or 67, have a lot less of parity in their benefit from social security to the hybrid than the people who are at age 45 to 62. So the more you compress the compounding of the increment, the more you have parity between the hybrid plan and social security. And so that's why my question about the spacing between the increment that you earn in the government actually factors into the calculation, because if you're just going to compound it every single year for 40 years, then yeah, you only get 75% of what social security would give you. But if you actually compress that to factor in the narrower, I'm sorry, the less, the fewer increments, as you have longer years of service, that compression actually has a tendency to create more balance. So I just would have, maybe in the analysis, if it's possible, to have it factored a lot more closely to the actual increment schedules or the salary increase schedules of the employees, and maybe even factor it in in a way where it would consider the, because if the pay adjustments do happen, for example, to bring them more in line with inflation, a lot of our government employees, some people will retire, and then all of a sudden, the pay adjustments happen the next year, you know, and so, because it's not linear, the benefit could, the benefit equation could be disrupted that way also. So that would just help me to have a little bit more of an apples-to-apples comparison on that.
Yeah.
Sure.
If I could just add, this benefit comparison is for somebody hired at age 25 and working at 65. For social security, you get, reach your maximum benefits with 35 years of earnings, and so the additional years of service... And so the additional years of, of service over 35 don't really give you anything for Social Security. And so that's why in this example, the Social Security benefits are much lower than hybrid. If we took someone hired at 30 or 35, as you said, the benefits get closer.
I know that, the good chairman, he testified about how time is of the essence, and I know that I provided, amended, some suggested amendments to the vice speaker's bill in June of this year that would try to create the parity that we're kind of looking at here. And that's one of the reasons why I'm kind of, I mean, I know that the chairman's asking me to move away from that chart, but it's one of the reasons why I'm kind of so insistent on really feeling comfortable with it, because that, that really is gonna, for me, make all the difference between whether or not it's a good idea for us to either move this forward or try to, or try to amend it in a way that's going to include some other, some other scenarios. But one of the things that I remember discussing when we were talking about this bill back in, back in June and over the summer, prior to me providing the amendments to the board, was when we added the employee contribution and the employer contribution under Social Security at 6.2 percent, it came out to 12.4 percent, right? Now that for future employees who won't be making any kind of unfunded liability payments to the, to the fund, that would just be the total, the total rate will be 6.2 and 6.2, right? But right now, for the, for the hybrid two employees, the ones on the last column, they're gonna be paying 10.5 and 1.6, and I still think there's a missing 3.4 there. But we'll just leave it at that, okay? Now, if we move a version of this bill forward that says that Social Security will become the retirement plan upon its availability from the federal government, I am concerned about us having employees, the current employees, paying 10.5 percent out of their own pocket, and their government is only putting in 1.6, when future employees are going to be getting, are only going to have to pay 6.2 percent out of their own pocket, and their government is gonna be putting in 6.2 percent. So what's gonna happen, if we don't have parity in benefits, is we're going to have some employees who are gonna be working for this government, having more taken out for their retirement than other employees, who are also going to be working for this government. And that's one of the things that I've been, I've met with a couple of the Retirement Fund Board members. It's one of the reasons why I put together this 73-page bill, or full of amendments, the hybrid bill, because I really believe that our government employees should, you know, we shouldn't have one employee paying, paying more for their retirement than another. And we shouldn't be taking out the government contribution and sticking it to the employee, because our government was the one that screwed up when they rolled out the D.C. plan in 1995.
That's right. That is right.
So, and that's why I'm a little disappointed, because I sent this to the retirement fund, and I asked you guys to give us a costing, as to how much we would need in order to make sure that everybody gets treated fairly, the existing employees and the new hires. And this entire presentation doesn't have any of that, that costing.
No, Senator, that, that's not exactly true. In fact, that next to the last column, in fact, takes that point of view, which, which we did talk to you about, you know, you're absolutely right.
Right, because it's based on your suggestion, that we looked at the hybrid in relation to...
So the, the only issue there is, is that when you do that, you know, we, to do that, we had to remove this issue of cost neutrality to the government. That's why it goes up from 28.15 in the last column, where the employee's shouldering more of the burden, and moves that, that burden over to the government, where now the government would contribute 30.44. That's a policy decision, you know, we, we can live with it if that's what you want to do, and if that's what you can afford. You know, we consider that a great idea, it's just gonna cost you more. And you get the same, the employee gets the same benefit, you're absolutely right, but the government shoulders more of the burden, and that's what that bottom row next to the last column shows how much more the government would shoulder to implement your, your suggested policy.
Now, we, we had a lot of, and we're kind of talking about inside baseball, because we had a lot of private meetings, particularly Lena and David, about, about, you know, trying to get us to this point. And in our private meetings, what I shared was, I wanted the employer cost, the top column, to be the same across the board. At, like, for example, if it's SS at 6.2, then that second to the last column should have been at 6.2. And, and the employee costs should match the, the total there. And that's why I'm having a difficult time understanding how the numbers, how you're saying the number's balanced, because in our initial conversations, that unfunded liability portion, that 3.4 percent, was actually creating an overage on the hybrid side as compared to Social Security. And now, and that's why that last column and that first column, I'm really trying to figure out, I mean, how can you add 140 million and still have, and still have the same government, and still have the same employer cost? And that's so important, because if we're going to really balance this thing out, and we do have a 3.4 percent out there lingering, if we just add 3.4 percent, for example, to that 4.9, that takes us to 7.3, which throws off, which makes the hybrid have a higher employer cost than Social Security, and that's why we were talking about bumping up the 457 contribution side, in order to make it balanced, so that new employees would have the same as the hybrid employees who are, who are contributing. So, I mean, Mr. Chairman, those are just the various conversations that we've had up until this point, but I just want to make, make a few things fundamentally clear, at least from my perspective on, on this bill. We shouldn't have employees paying more out of their pocket than other employees, you know, just because they're, they're coming in new. I really don't feel that the new plan that we rolled out in 1995 is the employee's fault. And if the solution is going to be for the government to, to craft and to present, and if the government was the one that did not roll out a proper plan in 1995, then the government needs to be the one to make the employee whole, we shouldn't be making the employee double how much they have to take out of their own pocket because we rolled out a faulty retirement plan in 1995. That's just fundamental for me. The second thing is, if we are going to have Social Security as the, as the replacement plan as soon as it becomes available, which I'm a strong advocate for, because of all the unfunded liability conversations we've had, you know, and I don't want to just, I don't want to belabor it, I'm not trying to make a public scene, I'm just want, you know, if we're gonna do that, then we need to make sure that there is parity in the, in the employer costs for, for those employees as well. And, and what I was really hoping I was going to see tonight was, if we increased the employer cost, how much would that be, in terms of a dollar amount? And right now, I mean, just, just working with what we have in terms of the, the second to the last column, we're looking at a current government cost of 28.16 percent, and that going up to, between 30 and 31 percent, so a total of between, between 2 and 3, 2 and 3 percent of additional cost. Do we have a dollar figure for that? What, what's the dollar figure on that difference there? The difference between 30.44 and 28.16, and the difference between 31.32, at least that'll give me a range of how much money. And that's one of the reasons why, I mean, just to clarify, that's one of the reasons why too, I've been, I've been so advocating for savings in the government, because if we're gonna pay for something like this, we need to find the, we need to find the money in the government to do it. And if we have 31.32 minus 28.16, at the high end, we're looking at 3.16 percent more to try to come up with something that's more, that has parity to the employee. So 3.16 percent represents what dollar figure, Rich?
So the total payroll is about $500 million, so 3.16 percent on $500 million is slightly more than $15 million a year.
About $15.8 million a year, right? And if we have a 3 percent, if, you know, every, every time we budget, we usually factor in about a 3 percent growth in our general fund revenue. And if our general fund revenue, just hypothetically speaking, is about $600 million, then if we just take next, next fiscal year's growth and throw it into being the solution for this problem, we can pay for this without sticking it to the backs of our employees, if we commit to making our 3 percent growth next fiscal year go to pay for, for a plan that's not going to be more costly to the employees. And I just wanted to state that on the record, because it's gonna require policymaker discipline on the budget. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anything else the Retirement Fund wanted to present? Okay. I understand that there are a number of employees here, and I have the whole list here, and I was gonna call them. But as long as you're all here, I think maybe it's imperative that we hear what the administration's position is on the bill currently. So I understand Senator Tony Bloss is here, and while all these employees are here, and it's early enough in the evening, I'd like for the employees to hear what the position
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee on appropriations and adjudication. My name is Tony Bloss, Director of Administration, testifying on behalf of Governor of Guam, Eddie Blossa Kavu. We thank you for the opportunity to, to provide testimony on Bill Two dash 33 LS, which is an act to add a new Article Five to Title Four, Chapter Eight of the Guam Code Annotated, to create a new hybrid retirement system with mandatory participation by the Governor of Guam employees, hired after December 31, 2015, with the optional participation for defined contribution retirement system participants who elect to transfer to the new hybrid plan in accordance with the regulations to be promulgated. Before going further into my testimony, Mr. Vice Speaker and members of the committee, I wish to convey that although I'm an elected active member of the Gov Guam Retirement Board of Trustees, I'm here to, to speak in my capacity as the Director of Administration, and my testimony in no way represents me as a Board of Trustees member or that of the Retirement Board. The administration recognizes that the current defined contribution or D.C. plan alone is not sufficient for our fellow Government of Guam employees to retire on. We too have heard the countless numbers of employees that express interest in the government coming up with a better solution so they can enjoy their golden years with their families. There are features of this bill, such as providing a set monthly amount to D.C. members upon retirement, thus guaranteed for the life of the members that are workable. The Governor, though, also has a shared responsibility of ensuring the viability of our government to be able to continue to provide services to all the people of our island, and is accountable for a wide range of responsibilities and obligations. And with that being said, before he fully commits to any proposal, the Governor must ensure that this administration does its due diligence in exploring any and all options for our D.C. members by fully vetting them and conducting an exhaustive, exhaustive review and understanding of the impact of the options that be, that we have on our government, as well as the total impact of the unfunded liability, which is now on the books of, of the Governor of Guam. In closing, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, we'd like to express that we continue to work closely with all the stakeholders, such as our fellow Government of Guam employees. Also, we're gonna work collaboratively with the Gov Guam Retirement Fund and the legislature and others, and we look forward to hearing from them as they testify in Bill Two dash 33. We're committed to actively and aggressively exploring the best solution to what our government has to offer its employees for retirement. We thank you for the, the opportunity to testify in Bill Two dash 33. Nam konas, Jesus Bos.
Senator, am I to interpret that to mean that if Bill Two were to pass as it is today, that it would be premature for the administration to support it?
Well, the, the government wants to, to view all the options. The hybrid option is one option, and I know there's, there's a few options that were outlined in the presentation today. And, and we're, we're gonna fully vet it and do an exhaustive review of it. That's something that the administration is gonna be doing. And, and we're gonna be working closely with the Retirement Fund, and as well working with, with the legislature as well, the, the committee.
As the Director of Administration, how would you and the administration itself react to a, an amendment to Bill Two to increase the, the government contribution?
See, that's...
And cover that?
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what we're looking at very closely, because we ultimately, we have to work together for the budgetary issues and the costs for the Governor of Guam. And as much as we want to do this immediately, we also have our due diligence, and we have to ensure that we do it correctly. And, you know, I was there in 1995, when, when the legislature did it, just that they closed the DB and opened this opportunity for the D.C. plan. And I know that for a fact that we didn't do, the legislature did not do a comprehensive review of the consequences that would happen for, for the D.C. employees. And that's happened today, and we see it. I know, I know Speaker, Speaker Panglinen wants to do that, and it's, it's been a lengthy process, and we're gonna do this, we're gonna do, for the administration, we have to do it correctly.
Over the last five years of the administration has been in office, besides you as a, as an elected member of the Retirement Board, has the administration been represented and participated in the discussions with the Retirement Fund over the last several years to try to get to these other options and this, this final recommendation that came down from the Retirement Board? Who represented the administration besides you in 2011 and 2012 and 2013 for, in trying to get to these answers?
You know, again, Vice Speaker, the bill was introduced last year, and now we're doing it this year. This is something we're gonna look at very, very closely, and we're committed to aggressively reviewing. The hybrid plan is, is a plan that we, we like, I mean, that's, but at the same time, we have to view all the, the other options that exist.
How long have you been an elected member of the Retirement Board?
About, within, almost two years, yeah.
And before that, there were discussions on this bill ongoing for several years. Again, it's, it's not so much this final bill, but was the administration engaged in participating in discussions over the last 10 years at the Retirement Board, and Senator Panglinen have been working on this, and...
Vice Speaker, again, this is, this is an option for us to, to work together and to ensure that we get a good retirement plan for our D.C. employees as well.
I mean, I will have a roundtable later on to try to get all the answers, but I just wanted the employees to understand that this has been going on for 10 years, and it's, you know...
Yeah, I agree, I agree, Vice Speaker, I agree. And, but again, we have our due diligence as well. I'm the Director of Administration, whether once the, the effect of the general fund, the fund itself, we have an obligation. And even as a member of the, as a Board of Trustees, we have to watch, look at this very, very closely before the final decision has been made by all the parties involved. And we'll work with you closely, Vice Speaker.
Anybody have any questions? Anybody? Anybody have any questions? Anybody? No? No? Okay, never mind. I just wanted the employees to hear that, that testimony, and there are a number of people that wanted to testify, and I'd like to go down, get down that list. He will. Just going down the list, Alice Tyron, are you going to be delivering testimony? Robbie Call? Jacqueline starts with an S. Jacqueline with the last name S. I don't want to. So, So Yon? There are other people that signed, and they just stated their position but didn't mark under testimony. I'll call out their names, and if you want to come forward and testify, you're more than welcome to. I'm just, I, I just called these two that, whose names were, had marked that they had written oral testimony. Starts with, last name with a T, Jolene. Marlene from Public Health and Social Services. Charlie Morris, yes, you did. Charlie Morris. Geraldine Kanga. Artemio Aguero. Janet Cruz. And Daniel Everisto. Adelina Porter? Then people marked support, but I'll just read their name in the event that they want to reconsider and come up and give oral testimony. Felix Beneventi. Alvina Castro. Andrew McGlonia. Emiliano Rubino. Michael Stoyl. Albert Santos. Oh, okay. All right, we'll, we'll start with Alice, and then go this way, and then off that way, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Vice Speaker Benjamin J. F. Cruz and members of the Committee on Appropriations and Adjudication. My name is Alice Tyron, and I am the Director of Empower Retirement. Empower Retirement is a third-party administrator for the Government of Guam Retirement System, the 401A program, and the 457 Deferred Compensation Plan. Empower would like to thank you for the invitation to appear before the committee to discuss Bill two dash thirty-three, the Hybrid Retirement System. We understand the committee's role is to review changes to the plan design of the retirement system and determine its impact on the community, and we appreciate the committee's conscientious consideration of this enormous undertaking. As the Administrator of the Defined Contribution Retirement System 401A program, Empower respectfully declines to comment on the impact of any potential legislation that could affect our relationship with our members or our plan sponsor. We view the types of plan and design to be, to be offered as an employer's decision based on funding preference, risk tolerance, and desired outcomes. Empower will fully support the committee's decision and work with our partner, the Government of Guam Retirement Fund and its members, to achieve the best possible outcomes. We are proud of our partnership and relationship with the Government of Guam Retirement Fund and will support them toward helping members be retirement-ready. Empower would welcome discussion on how to improve the Defined Contribution Retirement System and the 457 Deferred Compensation Plan, and offers the following suggestions: Increase contributions. The mandatory contribution rates for members under the Government of Guam Retirement System are much lower than several other government employers that offer only a defined contribution plan. Increasing the level of mandatory contributions could help employees be more retirement-ready. On the back of the second page, you can see a table. There are a few examples of some of the state plans that offer, that provide different contribution rates, right? If you have any questions, I'd be happy to, to answer that later. Consider implementing auto-enroll into the 457 program. Research over the past nine years of auto-enroll shows that over ninety percent of employees auto-enrolled into a retirement plan will continue to save in the plan. Empower suggests designing an auto-enroll formula with a potential match designed to incent employees to continue to save. For instance, auto-enrolled employees are able to change their 457 contribution at any time. However, if they choose to lower their contribution, they would lose out on all or a portion of the employer match of fifty percent up to sixty percent of, six percent of salary. Additionally, Government of Guam employees are not paying into Social Security at their current rate of six point two percent. Auto-enrolling employees at six percent to make up for the lack of Social Security may make the difference towards sustaining a comfortable quality of life at retirement. The chart below illustrates potential outcomes based on a twenty-five-year-old employee hired at forty thousand dollars per year with a three percent inflation, assuming retirement age at sixty-five and a twenty-year payout to age eighty-five. C, the utilization of Secure Foundation is a potential Social Security replacement or supplement. Secure Foundation is a product that can provide employees a guaranteed payout option at retirement to ensure that they will not outlive their money. Contributions have the greatest impact on the member's lifetime benefit. The greater the contribution, the greater the chance to accumulate more for a greater lifetime payout. Secure Foundation addresses longevity risk, that is, a member outliving their money, inflation risk, market risk, and provides for spousal lifetime benefit. Unlike fixed annuities, Secure Foundation also allows a member to withdraw in the event of an emergency. The percentage amount of the guaranteed annual withdrawal amount is based on the member's age at the time the guaranteed annual withdrawal begins, the benefit base, and each dollar contributed to Secure Foundation immediately increases the benefit base. There's a table in the back with an example. Two, prevent plan leakage. Hardship withdrawals from the 401A program reduces the amount members have available at retirement. From nineteen ninety-five to December two thousand and seven, members had five different hardship options available and were allowed to withdraw every twelve months. During this twelve-year span, there were close to eight hundred withdrawals amounting to almost two point six million dollars. After December two thousand and seven, hardship withdrawals were decreased to three options with stricter limits on the frequency of withdrawals. Even with these limitations, the 401A program had over five hundred and seventy hardships amounting to almost three point one million dollars. Limiting hardships would allow members to be in a better financial position over the long term. Defined benefit programs do not allow for hardships for active members, and the committee may want to consider taking steps to eliminate them from the 401A program. Auto-enroll or mandatory participation in the 457 may help to prevent and/or stop plan leakage as well. A member in the 457 Deferred Compensation Plan has access to his or her account via loan provision. A member may take a loan from his account, however, must pay the loan back. Unlike hardship withdrawals in the Defined Contribution Retirement System program, once taken, a member cannot make up for the amount withdrawn. The trustees of the Government of Guam Retirement Fund have taken great steps towards addressing and improving the Defined Contribution Retirement System 401A program and the 457 Deferred Compensation Plan by implementing a few of these changes, and we continue to work with them and provide the support they need. There is still much that needs to be done, and with your continued support, these needed changes will go a long way toward the fund's work to make the difference in the retirement future of Government of Guam employees. Attached is a table with an overview of the DCRS, the 401A program, and 457 plan benefits. The Roth fifty-seven has been approved and will be made available to employees after the restatement of its document. And that would be this table here. This was actually requested from our office, so we put this together that explains the D.C., the 401A program benefits as active employees and retirees, the 457 Deferred Compensation program benefits as well. Be happy to answer any questions should you have.
Thank you very much, and for the audience and for the listening audience, all the written testimony that is provided with the charts will be put up on my website, senatorsbjcruz.com, and will be put up on the OFB website, ofbgwam.org, okay? And I'll announce that in the press release tomorrow because I think it's important that some of them see that and the, the chart that was presented earlier by the Retirement Fund. All right, sir?
Thank you. Senator, my name is Robbie Call. I work with the Public Defender Service Corporation. Thank you for giving me some time this evening to speak regarding this issue. I'm not a financial expert. I'm not, have no background with finance or, you know, with, with numbers, dealing with retirement, but what, what gets to me with the, the new plan is, I mean, I can, I can see where Senator Siniklas was coming, coming by by saying that there probably needs to be about, around a twelve percent contribution total in order for the plan to work. So I don't, I don't see any real issues with increasing the contributions by the employee and the government for the retirement plan. However, the one point seven five percent per year credit for the average base, on the, based on the average of three highest salaries, seems a little too low. I think that probably shouldn't be around, up to two percent. And then with the retirement age, at age sixty-five, at eighty-five percent of your, eighty-five percent of your salary for the three highest salaries, with forty-nine years of service, basically, if someone wanted to retire at age sixty-five, they would have to start working at age sixteen in order to meet that requirement. Or they started working at age twenty-five, worked forty-nine years on top of their age twenty-five in order to retire at a maximum of forty-nine years and eighty-five percent. So I think that number's a little too high. It should probably be reduced maybe from forty-nine years to forty years, or eight, or age sixty to, instead of age sixty-five. The, the minimum number of years of twenty-five years of service could probably increase, you know, by a few more years. That way ensures that employees continue to contribute longer into the system, and as well as the vesting period should probably increase so that employees, new employees don't just come into the system and contribute, and then after five years pull not just their contribution, but also the government's contribution out. You know, so I think in all of the, we're in the right step here as far as moving into developing a new retirement system that obviously should work better than what is current, and I think everyone agrees with that. But again, to work, to work forty-nine years just to get a maximum of eighty-five percent of your salary, that's a, that's a really long time, and I think that can be compensated by an actual increase in contribution by both sides, the government and the employee. You know, I mean, we can't expect to put in only, you know, five percent and expect to retire at eighty-five percent, in other words. So there needs to be, there needs to be a, a contribution on both sides, in other words. There's always going to be a fun, unfunded liability. I don't think that's ever really going to go away. I think we're just kidding ourselves on that. I really don't see a problem with the old plan. Any, any good pension plan will, will work if it's, if there's no allocation of funding that's being diverted to the Retirement Fund. It's basically the, the retirees are being paid by current employees, and it's just a revolving will. So, you know, in the past, the, that plan worked fine until funds just weren't making it to the Retirement Fund, and then that's what created the unfunded liability, and that was because of a transfer authority that, you know, we don't see nowadays being prevented, but then again, you see, you hear, you're starting to hear again with hospital and, you know, if that happens again, it might start with DOE as well. So I think we're on the right track. I, I support the movement. I just think that some of the numbers need to be adjusted, just like Senator Siniklas said, with more clarity for the government workers as well as for lawmakers and the governor, so that, you know, there's no, there's nothing behind the cloak and, you know, everything's up for work. And thank you for your, your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Call.
Thank you, Mr. Vice.
Please make sure the lights on.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Vice Speaker and honorable senators of the thirty-second, thirty-third Guam Legislature. I just want to say, as I've, as I've listened to the discussion here, I'm, you're not going to hear a great cruncher of numbers when I go into this discussion, but we feel that to a, to this discussion, there, there is a numbers side and there's a human side, and we are going to be presenting the latter. My name is Charlie Morris. I am the Administrator for Nutrition Health Services at Department of Public Health, but for, for this testimony that I'm going to be offering today, that's pretty irrelevant because I'm just one in a cog of forty-two employees, both at the Department of Public Health and Social Services and at GURA, who all are attesting to what you're about to So in the foregoing testimony, I'm going to describe, one, for the purposes of perspective, who we are and the circumstances we currently face; two, our major concerns, both past and present, over how this government has handled, or in some cases has not handled, this process; and finally, three, why we support this bill. For the most part, we are either about to retire or have less than a ten-year window before retirement. We also feel that there are many across the government who share our story. Overall, employees of the Government of Guam range from high school equivalency to post-doctoral educated, male and female, hundreds of job titles across numerous agencies and multiple areas of specialization, and a great diversity of ethnicities, personal beliefs, and cultural backgrounds. Amidst all these differences, those who have spent the lion's share of their working years as Government of Guam employees have one thing in common: a life devoted to public service. From those at the lowest ends of the pay scale who have refused economic dependence in order to work hard, serve proudly, and in many cases have advanced themselves in their public service careers, all the way to the highest level professionals, many of whom have forsaken more lucrative careers in the private sector to work willingly and enthusiastically to serve the people of Guam without regret. Unfortunately, once their working careers have come to an end and it is time for retirement, GovGuam will be casting many of these same individuals into the humiliating abyss of the public welfare system. These are the same proud, hard-working individuals who throughout their entire working careers have earned every dollar that has ever passed through their hands. The disenfranchisement of these individuals in the D.C. plan, also known as the New Plan, is a great travesty that should not be allowed to continue any longer. Even more unfortunate is that it was not an unintended consequence on the part of the government. It was the culmination of a calculated marketing strategy nearly twenty years ago which successfully convinced incumbent employees to switch from the old Defined Benefits Plan to a new and inferior Defined Contribution Plan in nineteen ninety-five. GovGuam accomplished this by visiting the various government agencies and providing presentations to peddle the D.C. plan by touting the success of the stock market at that time, offering a twelve hundred, a twelve thousand dollar incentive to switch plans, and holding back on announcing their 457 Deferred Compensation annuity option until after employees had already locked in to their respective plans. So we weren't given the benefit of both a retirement floor and a long-term annuity. So we weren't given the benefit of both a retirement floor and a long-term annuity. We feel this government employed an unconscionable level of deception by choosing to sell their own agenda rather than educate employees with a balanced view of alternative choices. We were like a sheep looking for a shepherd, and instead we received a wolf in shepherd's clothing. In retrospect, we do not think that it was the government's intention to make employees poor at retirement. But as this process is moved forward, it is painfully evident that GovGuam has been willing to look the other way without regard to the horrific consequences reaped on real people as an acceptable level of residual damage in order to accomplish their focused agenda, which has always been to achieve desirable fiscal numbers on the government's budget ledger. We can all agree that government needs to be fiscally responsible, but the manner and reason why the D.C. Plan was established and how we were convinced into believing its false promises was unethical and heartless. Disenfranchisement is our government's legacy. GovGuam has subtly and incrementally diminished its employees' retirement livelihood in the long term by providing only one adjustment to the unified pay scale in almost a quarter century, which for many employees encompasses their entire career. And even after the most recent adjustment to the unified pay scale presently pays its employees at only 59 percent of the national average. This has contributed to a significantly lower standard of living among Guam citizens overall to the point where now one out of 3.4 of Guam's residents receive food stamps. Do we really want to continue down this road? As employees, we are not financial experts, but we do know right from wrong. And what's happening to all of us in the D.C. Plan is simply wrong. It is time for the legislature and the governor to do what's right and fix the injustice of the past so that we who loyally serve this community with much dedication can be provided a reasonable retirement future. Furthermore, we are also concerned with recent media reports where legislators seem to hold up Social Security as if it were a comprehensive solution to the ills of the current government of Guam-D.C. retirement system. We feel that all the current focus on Social Security misdirects the discussion from the more serious and imminent problem with the D.C. Plan for employees who are already ready to retire right now or in the near future. The addition of Social Security would be a useful long-term retirement component for young GovGuam employees at the beginning of their respective careers, but for incumbent employees nearing retirement and having few, if any, years vested into the Social Security system, which requires, as someone's already mentioned, 40 quarters of full-time employment to receive the first penny of benefits, it is essentially irrelevant, even if it were implemented right now. Moreover, we question why Social Security, which is a federal government annuity, should even occur in a discussion as having an impact on Guam's own state retirement system. One would be hard-pressed to identify any state government in the U.S. that boasts Social Security as the central component of their state or territorial retirement system. In any event, it is fine to look at long-term solutions, but the need right now is to focus on the immediate problem which continues to inflict damage on the lives of GovGuam employees near retirement and their families. So here we are. We now face another hybrid plan proposal. We have always felt, as we have made it clear in the local print media, that most fair option, the most fair option in the spirit of making it right would be to allow incumbent GovGuam employees who were deceived into switching to the D.C. Plan back in 1995 to buy back into the DB Plan and then implement the hybrid retirement system as presently proposed to all other GovGuam employees. At the very least, the hybrid plan should move forward, as proposed, for all Government of Guam employees. The government needs to stop disinheriting the future of the D.C. Plan employees nearing retirement. What we cannot afford to have happen is the very thing that has been happening to this point, for the legislature to once again talk this bill to death without resolution and continue the status quo with the present retirement system which continues to push many retiring employees off a cliff into the public welfare system. And I might add that I'm not tremendously encouraged by what I heard from Governor's Office representative towards this and the future of how this is going to go forward in any timely fashion. So we need, as the Retirement Board has stated in the past hearings, the D.C. Plan is not working and needs to be fixed. Whether one believes the hybrid plan or Social Security or some other plan is the answer, there is no denying that the current D.C. Plan is not serving its intended purpose. So let's pass Bill 2-33, not just for all of us here at this hearing, but for everyone else in the D.C. Plan who is facing a dire future, and also for our young and new employees who are now just starting their government careers filled with optimism, hope, and a desire to make a positive impact to our community, who sadly have no idea how GovGuam will reward them decades from now when they approach retirement and realize what a failure the D.C. Plan has been. I appreciate this opportunity to present testimony. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I understand you have the second half of the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice.
Make sure the red light's on.
Yes. Thank you, Vice Chairman. Good evening, everybody. Mine is very short. My name is Adelina Portella. I've worked since 1992 to the present. I've worked for 25 years in loyal service. I am 57 years old. I went to college, got a degree in nutrition. I'm currently a lactation counselor 24/7. Somebody calls me midnight, I answer the phone call. I take care of the welfare of Guam's newborns and new mothers. I give them encouragement, information, and support. I have invested my time and energy in public service for the last 25 years. I feel so cheated and deceived by the retirement fund in strongly persuading me to change my retirement plan. They talk about early retirement at 55 years and a financial security. I am very concerned because my knees are hurting, my back is aching, and that tritis is setting in, and I don't have financial security with the D.C. Plan. I have to work until I drop. If I retire at 60 or at 65, I'll have a monthly income of 500 to 700 a month, or 8,400 per year, for 25 years if I live that long. I'll have to depend on food stamps, welfare, Medicaid, GMH, which maybe I can't afford to pay, GURA housing, and other government assistance and handouts and subsidies. I will not have Medicare because I don't have Social Security. So is this really how the government values my lifetime service? Is this how GovGuam really wants their manomcos to live in the future? Is this the sound government management? There will be 8,000 manomcos who will be asking the government to take care of them until we all die. So is this how we treat our elderly? So please, I beg you to look into this matter soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's something hard to follow. Hafadean buen estado. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members of the Senate. I'm Dr. Michael John Stoyle, a tenured full-time Associate Professor of Political Science and Military Science at the University of Guam. Several of you may remember me from several years ago when Guam's various news media relied on my professional expertise to objectively evaluate the threat posed to us by North Korea's alleged long-range missiles. I also hold a Master's of Public Administration and a Master's of Science and Psychology. Tonight I offer a few remarks on how the current retirement plan affects Guam's retention and recruitment of professionals, including UOG faculty. I've learned that roughly 1/3 of all civilian professionals with advanced degrees recruited from off-island by GovGuam attempt to find jobs elsewhere within two years. There are many possible explanations for this turnover following a long and costly recruitment process, but I am certain that one important reason is the current retirement system. If I had to depend on the current retirement plan, I would be forced to continue working until the health problems of aging prevented it. I am 65 years old. After nine years at UOG, my retirement account is now large enough to last roughly two to three years of full retirement. With no family on island, my survival then would quickly depend on access to Medicaid and public assistance. But I am fortunate. I came to UOG after more than 30 years of employment covered by Social Security and other pension systems. About half of that time I earn more than I currently make at UOG. Because I can rely on Social Security and other income, I probably will spend my entire GovGuam retirement account on a new car and a cruise to celebrate the end of my teaching career. But younger American and Japanese professionals, however, don't have this luxury. They compare the retirement prospects provided by GovGuam with other systems, especially Social Security, and often realize that their only good choices are to marry into an island family to care for them in old age, or seek employment elsewhere with a retirement package that will in fact enable them to retire. I sympathize with those young professionals and mourn the loss of their talent to Guam. Under similar circumstances, I would have left long before gaining tenure. It is necessary that GovGuam modify its retirement policies to successfully recruit and retain quality off-island personnel for professional careers on Guam, including people from the Marianas who have received higher degrees on the mainland than in Japan. The search for perfection is the enemy of the achievement of the good. And while I acknowledge and appreciate Senator San Nicholas's position for equity, you have to be aware that we don't have equity now. There are younger faculty than me who are paying less into the retirement fund and can be guaranteed out of a defined benefit when they retire instead of the $40,000 settlement that I'll receive. That's not equitable. So basically, I view Bill 2-33 as a step in the right direction. Is it perfection? No, but it doesn't have to be. One last point, which is not in my prepared remarks. I did listen to the statement of the Director of Administration, and as a political scientist, I take great exception to his remarks. The position of Governor Calvo's administration seems to be misunderstanding its function. Its role is to execute the legislation passed by the Guam Senate. It does not serve as a non-existent upper chamber to vet legislation passed by this body. I hope they come to understand that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Albert Santos, just support. Okay, thank you. Mr. Peter Sargosy, Ms. Cheryl Sargosy.
In support of the bill.
Okay, great. Thank you. Judge Michael Bedaglio. Jane Mandiola. Tom Nadeau. Stephen, okay, Stephen Weiss. I'm just going to list the names because I don't want you to think that I'm not going to allow you to change your mind if you want to come up at this point. Michael, I mean Rachel Leon-Guero. Bob Barber. Willie Merrickson. Johnson Augustine. Barbara Canata. Emma Tison. Doris Ada. Irene Kanga. Jackie Bloss. Chris Castro. Ken Murphy. Jennifer Tapashio. Agnes Ergon. John Camacho Jr. Virginia Molo. Elizabeth Murphy. Thomas Savian. Thomas Subblon? Might be. Yeah, it is Subblon, I guess. Sis Cisa. Tita Loma? Tita Taloma? No. Bertha Tyron. Amy Ferg. Rose Cruz. Maria Baldemore. Thelma Romero. Jenny Lynn Kinto. John Peterson. Apollin, Ap- 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 Ap-[1656.97] Okay. Your Honor, please.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vice Speaker Cruz, and members of the committee. I do, I can confirm that Senator Ben Pangolin, the late Senator Ben Pangolin, has been working on this for over 10 years. We've had many conversations about it, and I've met with the committee and all the members at some roundtables for the last two or three years. A couple of comments that I'd like to make on the bill, and these are the same kind of comments that I made the last time with respect to how to formulate a plan. You know, it just has to do with Mr. Collet represented, or I talked about some ideas about how we can make the plan a little bit more conservative in terms of trying to work and ensure that we don't run into the same problems we ran into with the former defined benefit plan. One aspect would be the 1.75% of the highest three years, and we talked about maybe increasing that from three years to seven or even 10 years. I think that provision, the highest three years, it, you know, for lack of a better description, really benefits those with political connections because those are the people that have the ability to drastically increase their salary. Everybody else would, for the most part, 98% of the government is given salary increments at a regular basis, and its salary grows slowly. I think my recollection is it's about 3.1% is what the increments are between most, if not all, of the pay scale under the new HAY study. So by averaging it out, Social Security does it over 30 years, and so it takes an average 40 quarters is what it takes to qualify, but your salary is actually averaged over 30 years. So even if you, as a government employee, worked 10 years for Social Security, you would qualify, but they would add 20 years of zero to your average salary because it's averaged over 30 years. So that's one of the penalties if you tried to start Social Security now. So I think increasing the average, the benefit, the base benefit from three years to seven to 10 years would, again, go a step towards ensuring the life and the, of the fund. The other thing is, again, the idea of it being a hybrid where there's a 1% mandatory provision to pay into the deferred compensation. I mean, I think the minimum annuity, if it's a fair annuity, should be sufficient, and again, you're asking people to put 1% and do what with it? You know, we have the same issues we've had with the 5%. People do not have, do not take the time, nor maybe do they have the time or the expertise to understand how to invest or don't want to. So the idea that we're, of the hybrid, again, I would think that if you, if we have a nine and, or nine and a half percent, or as I think Senator San Nicolas had really talked about, and I think a lot of people really like the idea, if the government puts in a little bit more money and we go to the 7.2 and 4.9%, you have an annuity that you can live with. It's a minimum annuity, and if you wish to put more money in, that option is, should be available the same way it's available now. But to have it mandatory, again, I think maybe is not necessary, assuming that the annuity is as such. For people to make a decision on whether to roll over, I think, I would hope that if this bill is passed, that there's some provision that orders the retirement fund to actually produce a report for each of the individual employees as to what the cost would be to go into the hybrid system because it's going to be based on an actuary cost of credited service, and people need to know, based on what they have in there, are they going to have sufficient money to buy sufficient credits so that the plan is worthwhile to them? Another problem is, in reality, we need to fix the defined compensation plan regardless. If you're going to make it an option, then you're still going to have a number of people who, for better or worse, are going to say, "One plan is going to cost me more money than the other plan. I'm just going to go with the cheap plan and hope things work out." So one way to ensure, or to encourage them, or to nudge them towards an annuity is to make sure that concurrent with introducing the hybrid plan, that the legislature amends, I think, 8208 and 8209 of the current plan so that even if you stay, anybody who does stay with a deferred compensa-, or a defined compensation is going to eventually move that rate up to whatever rate the government decides, or the legislature decides we're going to do. If it's 7.2, 7.2. If it's 9.5, it's 9.5. Then the people know, "Listen, whichever plan I choose, I'm going to be putting in the same amount, so let's look to see what the benefits are and decide, do I really want to be in charge of investing my money, or do I want somebody to do it for me and guarantee me an annuity?" I think that would just go a little bit further in encouraging people to move into a secured annuity so that, a benefit so that it assists them. And I think, I think the 7.2% and 4.9% is an attractive option. I think the reason it was 10.5 is, again, because the retirement fund was under the direction to make it zero cost to the government. The additional costs, I worked out, is really 2.28%, so it's a little bit less than 2.5%. It's about 11.4 million. And hopefully, the 3% growth that Senators Nicholas had projected, so it would be less than 15 million to get the lower option, which, again, would be fairer, I think, in some respects. It's just a question of whether the government can afford it, and it would be a question of the government just being able to do it for a period of 10 to 15 years, I think, because that's the, that's the life left on the unfunded liability. Is it around 2025 to 2030, or is it?
2031.
2031. So we're talking about 15 years, and then the government's, then the cost of the government substantially drops. I would assume that if the government goes ahead and does the 9.5%, that in 2031, at a minimum, there would be a readjustment because the government liability would end. And those are just some of the comments. I obviously have always been in favor of a hybrid plan because the reality is, is employees at the court, as well as anyone else in the government who relies on the defined contribution clearly aren't, aren't in a position, not at the rates that have been going, and thank you for your time.[890.06][890.06](APPLAUSE).
That's excellent. It's a tough act to follow. Mr. Vice Speaker, thank you, and Senators, thank you for having us here and letting us speak to you on this. I've been asked to come by many of my colleagues because I was present during the presentations to, that did convince many to switch from the defined benefits plan to the defined contribution plan, as well as, I've been following these issues for over 20, well, ever since I've been here, since 1993. I'm Bob Barber. I'm a full professor at the University of Guam, tenured. I want to just give you, I'm here, I want to speak both from an aspect of social justice and just as giving you a little history as well. I'm probably in the upper percentage of Gov Guam employees in terms of salary. And yet, if you look at the, and I also am trained in managing money, and I teach a family finance class, I teach farm management classes, I'm well aware of how to make money grow. I have done as well as I can within the defined benefits, and yes, my benefit is way beyond the 50,000 average Gov Guam. But nonetheless, if I retire any time in the next 10 years, I will retire dependent on this plan. I will retire in poverty and dependent on social services. How much more so someone in the lower ranks of government pay? You got to do something. You cannot let it go. Just, it must be done. Now, historically, the defined benefits plan, maybe, I believe firmly that it wasn't just the fact that the government agencies weren't making their payments. I believe also the plan, as noted in the legislative record, was not a sustainable plan. The contributions of the government and employee were not adequate to maintain the benefits long term. I think that what happened is you saw in the late 80s and early 90s, you started seeing people mature into that plan and started taking these very generous retirement benefits. At the same time, we were in a financial crisis during the 90s and agencies were not paying. That made many of us, especially relatively new employees, very scared for our retirement. We were very unsure about. Then we had the plan, come to our agencies and tell us, and I can't speak for all the hearings because I only tend to Gov Guam, I mean, the Gov Guam hearings at University of Guam. But at those hearings, I asked two questions, both of which are very important. I asked first, 10% is what any financial management book states as a absolute minimum for a family to save, each employing member of the family to save beyond whatever retirement plan they have, to hope to have some form of a prosperous retirement. 10% is all that this plan gave as the base. I asked at that thing, is there, are there any plans in the future to come out with some form of a additional plan equivalent to the 403B or other, and this would be, I guess, the 457 that they had not yet announced, that would include some form of optional match, knowing that most employees would not choose to make that match, but that those who were smart and would think about it would make the match and could grow their retirement into something that would be sustainable? At that meeting, it was stated, "Yes, we have plans for some form of a match, might go up to 10%." That was one thing. Second thing I asked after that is, given this massive liability to the, to maintain the defined benefits plan, are there any plans in Gov Guam or within the retirement fund to come up with additional government payments to address this huge and growing liability? They said, "No, absolutely not." That made my decision to switch out of a plan that I knew would be inadequate from day one, but into a defined contribution plan. Now, you can imagine my frustration when, less than a year after the closing and launching of the defined, defined contribution plan, Gov Guam started, the legislation was passed so that every government agency would take the equivalent of 20%, or, and it's changed year to year, but it's been approximately plus or minus 20% ever since then, of the defined contribution employee's salary and pay it into the defined, into the retirement fund, which only funds the defined benefit plan. That, long term, that has effect. Money's fungible. It moves back and forth to adjust for gaps. It's like water. It flows into the gap. When you take 20% of all new employees coming into Gov Guam of their salary and you're putting on, that means there's employees that will not be hired and replaced. So what you've had is for almost two decades now, you have had the Gov Guam employees, every five employees are doing the job of six employees, and yet, that money for that sixth employee is not going into their retirement, it's going into the retirement of the defined benefits plan that Gov Guam has known since the early 90s was not sustainable, and instead of fixing that, they've been given cost of, I have no problem with those at the bottom, I should say, having cost of living adjustments and other adjustments in their pay. But when you have others who are taking home 80, 90, 100,000 in the retirement plan, getting the same percentage cost adjustment, that's not right. That's not, that's not sustainable. But these things have gone on. Meanwhile, all these loyal servants of Gov Guam, many of them, as you can see, only now have 50,000 in their savings, which means two years in poverty, and then it's gone. So what else do they do? Now they're totally dependent on government support. I would maintain that this is going to cost you more, and is costing you more, as these people are just now starting to come home than the contributions. But, so this has gone on. This 20% has been paid, plus or minus 20% for all these years, and that did two consequences. It meant that there would be no chance of any form of an optional match for employees to be able to build their retirement more. But it's, it's, it's also just ensured that the plan would not work from the get-go. Now, this is, this is not just, this should be fixed. That's it. I want to say, I am, and, and I want to say I'm 100% in favor of this, this hybrid plan because it sets a floor. As it stands now, I will, if you do not do anything, I'll be working here at the University of Guam, and I love this island and I love my job, so it's not that terrible of a thing. But I will be working here till I'm 80 or 90 years old, and I basically can't function anymore, and they'll, they'll send me off because I'm seeing how I'm, you know, stumbling in my classes. But the bottom line is, it, you cannot retire under this plan. This hybrid plan sets a base that I can see, but I'm 61, I can see by the time I'm 70, I could actually retire and enjoy the next, hopefully, 20 years of my life. But not, not wealthy, but I will have a base, and it will be nothing like that. 80% or, and the defined benefits, many of these people who were my peers who did not choose to jump ship are now walking out with for the rest of their life. I've done everything I could to be wise in this, and I seriously feel for those who have not had training or education, because there was no education on how to manage your stocks and all this, you pretty much had to learn it on your own. So I think this is a really solid plan. Now, what I really want you to consider, and I, while cognizant of Senator San Nicolas's comments, I think that you must ensure that both Gov Guam can sustainably maintain their contributions in order to maintain the benefits, and that we, the employees, have to maintain our match. And I'll say right now, I have absolutely no problem paying 10, 12, 14% to be guaranteed this base security in my retirement. I have many employees who feel the same way, young employees who don't mind paying it just to know that someday they will retire. We all know we'll never get the benefits of the current defined benefit plan, but we do know that there is a chance right now, and I pray that the Governor hears this, that we have a chance to be able to have a retirement where we can at least be comfortable and not in poverty and not dependent on government services. His points are very valid. Three years is, maybe your average should be a little longer. I wouldn't go as far as 10, but, you know, five to seven-year average would kind of balance things out a bit, and it gives a little more fiscal conservative plan. I do believe you need to be somewhat conservative. I would love to see the option two you had with a larger government match, but what I would rather see instead of that is that match of the government with maintaining the option, the last option of the 12% employee match, and then maybe move us from 1.75% to a little closer to. The defined benefits was what, 2.5% I believe it is that they're getting? But no matter what you do, giving us a floor is a wonderful thing. I was hoping someone would raise the issues of Social Security. You really cannot count 10 years of Social Security as being able to retire because it is averaged over a longer period, and so you'll, you'll be retiring once again in poverty if you solely go towards Social Security. So I, again, I am grateful that you're considering this. I think it's an excellent plan. I support it, and I would be perfectly happy, I've read it, the whole thing in its entirety, and I, I would be very happy to see this thing passed. I mean, there are things that you could do to make it better, but it will cost the government or it will cost the employees. Nothing is free. We have to pay. It either has to come from the employees or the government, and I believe we, the employees, have an obligation to pay. And remember, the defined benefits plan did pay 9.5% also, and so that was the employee match. So it's, it's not a hard thing to do, and to do 2% or 3% more because the stock market's not growing at the rates it did years ago. We can't go out and get CDs at 4% and 5% and 6% as past decades could. So the investment options are not as great. Maybe we have to pay a little more to our future. But again, I applaud you. I am grateful for this bill. I truly hope it gets passed in at least some form that is fiscal conservative, that guarantees that if I move into this plan, when I'm 90, the plan won't go bankrupt, because that was my fear in the older plan, is that, and why I jumped ship and switched. And I will always envy my colleagues who are in the defined benefit plan, but with this plan, at least I will have a chance to enjoy a little bit of retirement, and maybe I'll get out of the President and other people at the university's hair a little bit earlier, and I stop bothering them so much. I thank you for your time.[1534.26][1534.26](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Dr. Barber.
Every day.
Ken?
My name is Ken Murphy. Thank you, Speaker, and the other Senators in the panel. I, when we talk about Senator, Senator Ben Pangolin, I, I about 10 years ago ran to him because I calculated, I calculated what I needed to retire, and I just saw that the defined contribution plan did not have it. So I actually, and whether we say serendipity or whatever, as I, when I, when I went to Senator Ben, he was also introducing his defined contribution plan, so I've been, we've been, I've been kind of, been communicating with him with a plan while he was alive, and I've been very, and I really support, I support this defined contribution plan. There has been some, there has been some, there are things that I don't quite, I think, need to be fixed, but on the whole, I support the defined contribution plan. Now, there was a lady that testified, you know, she, when she retired, she'll have $500, and that $3,000 for the defined benefit plan, okay, I mean, defined contribution plan. If you really want to know the actual number, and I do it every day just to remind me that what I have to do and why I have to stick it out, you go to www.gwrs.com, and you log on, and what's going to first come up is, the first thing that comes up is your balance. And I'm going to say, I, my balance right now is right around 150,000. But the next thing that comes up on the screen is if you retired at this, if you retired at this point in your life, it says right there, just like I think Social Security does the same thing, they give you a forecast. They say, "I will have an annuity of $900 per month." Okay? Just, that's not even, that's not even mortgage. Okay? And I opened that thing, and I remind myself, just like I did to run to Senator Ben to fix this, I opened that every day to remind myself that I'm not the only one. I bet every, every person in the defined contribution can do the same thing, and every day they'll see, $900 is not going to do it. Okay? And I've been working with the Government of Guam for a while too, and there's, there's people that are just starting out, they're lucky. You know, if this plan goes true, they are lucky. And if this plan goes true, we're lucky because we have, we still have a chance. And I, you know, Social Security, you can work on that. At my point in life and in my career, that's not going to help me. Okay? And we're looking at the numbers, okay? Yeah, I think, I think the judge, judge mentioned that, you know, 49 years of working, and that's, that's a calculation. If you take, if you take 85 years and divide it by that 1.75%, that's where that 49 comes from. So increase that rate. I mean, it doesn't, I think the rate for the defined benefits is 2%, and as you get to your last five years of your 35 years, it increases to 2.5. That's why you get your 85%. So, I mean, to increase the rate, I don't think should be a problem. Now, we talk about the government contribution. From what I understand is that the government right now is paying 30, anywhere from 28% to 30%, and they're paying it, I think it's, I think it's by agreement with the retirement fund. I don't know if it's, but they're supposed to pay down their liability. pay down their liability to zero at a certain amount of time. And what I understand, and that's the thing that, I, I understand what Senator San Nicolas is saying, if, if when that liability is paid off, that they stay at one point nine percent, I mean, one, then that's, that's going to be a problem. So, if we're going to stick, I know that the burden right now, thirty percent, is not, you know, it's not a drop in a bucket. So I understand the need for discipline at this point. But, so, I'm willing to take that, I'm, I'm willing to, like, like the person before me said, I'm willing to pay anything at this point to get, to get the, to get the annuity. And I'm willing to, to let the government take care of their responsibility at thirty percent and slack off on mine. But when, when that's paid off, then they have to assume. And that, and I don't know how we're, how we're going to word that, and how we're going to keep the government to make sure that they, they, they stick to their word, because I know, once it's paid off, then liability is zero, but they, this is an ongoing process. So, somewhere along the way, like I said, I'm willing to pay the price now to, to have the, the government just make sure they make their payment. Make that house payment. Okay? And, once, once that's done, then there, there has to be a system where they will assume a, an equal contribution. And, again, I support, I, I, I've, I was, I was, I had communicated with Senator Pangolinan about this, and I'm, I'm serious, every day, when I look at, when I look at that, when I look at the website, and I see those numbers, it just reminds me that something has to be done. Something has to be done. And I, I'm not going to, you know, there's people that, you know, think welfare, everything, and sixty-five, I'm still young. I don't think I'm going to retire, but I'll do something else. But at least, I can just, at least I can, if I have to do, if I keep, have to keep working, I don't have to be working, you know, two, three jobs just to get through. But I think that there's every member of the defined contribution plan, I think, can, can punch into that website and give you that number, and I think that number, that number is very low. It's the drop in a bucket. So, again, I support, I support this plan, and, and there are some things that need to be worked out, but I think as a, as a legislative body, it could be done. And I, I think we have to hold, we, we also, and I firmly believe that if you legislate, the governor has to just implement. So, I think it's in your hands, and I, and I, again, the mistake was made before. The D.C. plan was a mistake, and they're not, it, it's a mistake that could have been avoided, but it's a mistake. And, again, it, it took, it's not just the work from, from the, the fund, but also it had to be legislated. And I think that's, so, it, the, I guess everything now falls on your hands to, to get the legislation right, and, and I'm, I'm going to, I am going to talk to my fellow members, and I'm going to tell them to open up that website, and I think, over time, it's going to get louder and louder, that the need is now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Murphy. Mr. San Nicolas.
Good evening, Vice Speaker, B.J. Cruz, and senators. I understand that everybody, most of them are in favor, I'm opposed, of this, because it happened before. I came in in ninety-five. We're not given the option of the old plan, we're given the option of the contribution plan. I, I threw out questions to them, you know, I said, they were saying that it's a good, good deal, that, that it's going to be invested, mutual funds, mutual funds. So I said, "Okay, can you guarantee me that the stock market's not going to crash?" What happened? September eleventh, two thousand and one? Crash. And they crashed again. And like this gentleman said, it kept on going up and down. My contribution is small. I don't make as much. Right? But, the most thing I got against this is, like Senator San Nicolas said, let's match it. You know? I'm putting in fifty dollars. Hey, you put in fifty dollars. Why are you going to put the burden on me? All on me, the employee. Um, it doesn't make sense. I'm doing service to the community. And then you, everybody's talking about, you know, I could go on sixty-five, seventy years working. Well, have we considered Department of Public Works? Those guys? Can you imagine a seventy-year-old worker trying to change a transmission or something like that, carrying tires on the buses or anything? I don't think so. Or, GPD? Seventy-year-old guy chasing down the twenty-year-old. Who's going to win? You know? Firemen. You want a seventy-year-old fireman pulling a hose to try to put out the fire, or to save a life? How are you going to carry that, that person down? Sixty-five years? Nah. Keep it at fifty-five. Or thirty years. Um, let's not forget them. Um, what else? Um, that's, mine's kind of short, that's pretty much what I got. I mean, like I said, I think we need to stop this right now, look at it again, get it right. It happened to me and other firefighters. We hardly have anything. I mean, we have to look somewhere else. Everybody's talking about, well, we're lifers now in Gov Guam. You're not lifers, because I don't know if you're going to be able to pull that hose. You know? Maybe you can, maybe you can't. But, I don't know. Let's, let's stop this and let's do it right, and revisit it again. There's a, I heard a lot of testimonies and everything. I don't know about numbers, but, you know, I'm going to get penalized if I retire. Why are you going to penalize me? If I want to retire at fifty-five, you want to say, "Okay, you got to take out, what, six percent? Because you retired before sixty-five?" I don't know. I'm not in an office job or anything like that. We're out there in the field. Nobody spoke about us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Thank you very much. Mr. Budasi.
Evening, Vice Speaker, Senator Esfaldon, Senator San Nicolas, Senator Ada, Senator Underwood, Senator Ada. My name's Chris Budasi. I'm a government of Guam employee and a current D.C. member. I agree in principle with the bill, because it's going to improve the current situation of, of some D.C. members, specific, more specifically, the, the, probably the fifty-year-old and up tier of employees that are getting set to retire, that have not had the adequate ability to save in the current D.C. plan. It could be argued that it would also improve for somebody in their twenties or thirties, but I think that would be an argument that you could have, that maybe it wouldn't improve it, based on the way it's written now. And I want to talk a little bit about that. But first, I, I do want to applaud the legislature and the retirement fund for, you know, recognizing that there is a problem, and for, especially for the retirement fund, for having the perseverance to keep at this. I know there's, it's been a long road. I was intertwined in a little bit of that road, and, and I know that every one of those members on the board wants this thing to succeed one way or another, and I, I hope we can all come to a reasonable agreement on how that, that should be. So the, the main issue I have with the bill is the, the level of benefits. The level of benefit in the bill provides a one point seven-five percent benefit per service year of the highest average of the, highest three years of service. So, just keeping it simple, you know, if somebody had an average salary of sixty thousand dollars at thirty years of service, they would get fifty-two point five percent of that annuity, as an annuity. So that would be thirty-one and a half, thirty-one point five thousand dollars a year. Thirty-six years, sixty-three percent, comes out to about thirty-seven, almost thirty-eight thousand. And, and to get this, we're asking the retirees to put in an additional four point five percent of what they're putting in today. And I would say that, you know, for that person at sixty thousand dollars, they're, they're retiring into poverty. If you inflation adjust for somebody who's in their twenties or thirties, that's going to retire at that thirty-one thousand annuity in twenty years, it's not going to have the same buying power as it has today. And so I think there's some issues that need to be addressed as far as that. I want to speak a little bit about equity. I don't want to talk too much on it, but I, I do think it's worth noting, you know, the current D.B. members are, they can retire at thirty-six years and get eighty-five percent of their top three salaries. You know, that, in comparison to this bill where you have to work forty-nine years to, to maintain that same level of benefits. And, and people have said it more eloquently tonight than I could ever say it, with respect to the equity issue, and how D.C. members have been paying in to, to pay for that unfunded liability for the last twenty years, as being a D.C. member. Which gets to the other equity. So the private sector, generally you would have a, a 401K, and then the employer would pay into Social Security, as you would as well. And so that provides a, a bigger level of benefit than what the government of Guam, D.C. members are getting today. Government of Guam members are getting five percent. Private sector, depending on the match of the employer, would be getting anywhere from nine point two percent to higher. Most employee, most employers prob, I think, match around two to three percent, and some even higher than that. So, for the last twenty years, the D.C. members have been, been basically shorted out of that, that gap between what, what the D.B. members are getting as a benefit and what the private sector's getting. And, and so I think, as others have mentioned, the government, I think, bears a little bit of responsibility to, to fix that problem, and, and this is the way to do it. And, I'm not suggesting that this bill doesn't fix the problem, because it does, and it's a step in the right direction, but I don't think it does enough. And that's, that's why I'm here presenting. The, the plan by the fund is presented as cost-neutral, but I think this assumes that the fund will receive a, a pretty broad mix of different employees that enroll in the hybrid plan. And so if, I think if, if only that fifty-year-old segment who, who's only got forty thousand in their accounts are the only ones that enroll in the hybrid plan, I don't think it's cost-neutral anymore. And I don't know if anyone's looked at those numbers. You know, I think the, the bill hedges that a little bit by requiring the new employees to enroll, which I think helps make up for a little bit of that, but it, I, I don't think you're going to get a cost-neutral solution with this current bill, because I don't think it's attractive enough to entice what the, the actuary is, is probably projecting as, of the, the number of employees that would come into the new hybrid plan. So, you know, how do you track those D.C. members into the hybrid plan? How do you, how do you attract the most amount of employees into the D.C. hybrid plan? And I would suggest that you would do that by increasing the benefit to either two percent or two point two percent, rather than the one point seven-five. And, and I know that, and, and just to my earlier comparison, at the sixty thousand dollar level, at thirty years, that goes to thirty-six thousand a year, and at thirty-six years, that goes to forty-three thousand a year. Now, I, there was a draft report done by Milliman that I had access to from my previous position at Senator Ben's office, and this was a report drafted in April twenty-fourteen. And in this report, in the notes on page twenty-eight, it states, "For most retirees, replacement ratios of eighty to a hundred percent are required for a retiree to maintain their standard of living at retirement." And this bill suggests fifty-two point five percent at thirty years of service. So I, it's just something to think about and consider. The fund's own consultant is saying eighty to a hundred percent to retain, to maintain their standard of living, and this bill's going to offer fifty-two point five percent at thirty years of service. So, you know, even that's not kind of aligned with, with what the consultant is saying in their report. Now, I know that there's an issue with the two percent. I think the fund believes that there might be a legal challenge to that, because the, the existing D.B. members, it would be a better benefit than the D.B. members if, if the hybrid members were to get a two point two credit for years of service. So, what I, what I hope you would consider is, if that's, if that's true, and I'm not well enough versed to know all the facts behind that, but that's what I've heard, that the fund's opposing it because of that particular, is opposing going above two percent because of that particular issue, I would propose that you set up a new retirement fund to get around that issue, and just forget the current retirement fund, and don't let that be a barrier to being able to provide a better benefit. I know that sounds radical, but I think, you know, if you look at all the states across the U.S., they have dozens and hundreds of retirement systems within their state systems. And so it's not unheard of to have more than one retirement fund for a, for a government pension system. Um, now, I know, of course, the, for, for everybody, funding is the issue, and so, you know, how do we increase the benefit to the employees, and, and with, without bankrupting the government? And so I, I would propose there's three ways to do it, and it's already been talked about, I think, by several people tonight. One way is you just increase the budget for it, and you find the money for it. So it's either through, you know, the, the increases in revenues year over year, or you, you figure out ways that you can, you can cut expenses in some areas and move it into there. And also, the employees pay more. So maybe make the employees pay ten and a half percent, or eleven and a half percent. But, and I heard that several times tonight from other people. So it's not, I think it can be a combination of both to pay for it today. You can also extend the, the amortization period by one and a half years or two years. I know this is a taboo thing, and the, the fund will adamantly oppose this, but, again, referring to that same Milliman report, it says the, the four and five-year increases to the amortization period result in remaining, would be a negative amortization. So that's at four and five years. So that's not, if we, if we extend the amortization, one year, two years, up to three years, it's not going to have a negative amortization for the fund. And so I would suggest, look at one and a half years and see how much additional benefit you can provide by doing that. And then, of course, the third option would be to extend the amortization, a year and a half, a year, and then also do it through the budget. It would be a combination of both of scenarios. You would do it through the budget, through the employees' share of contribution, and through extending the amortization. So, you know, please, consider, you know, increasing that benefit. I mean, I, saving on this thing today is not going to, you're, we're just going to pay for it on the back end. So, you know, GMH is not going to get paid twenty years down the road when somebody's making thirty-one thousand dollars a year, and they have to go in there and they have a thirty thousand dollar bill to pay, if they don't have insurance. So, I mean, these are, and, again, the, the issue of being on welfare, food stamps, not being able to afford to, to live. So, you know, I think the, the government has a good track record for the last twenty years of, of paying the fund. You, you have the power to do this. You can, you can extend that amortization period, you can, you can figure out a way to do it, and, you know, the legislature, the legislature borrowed money from the fund to bail out the health insurance in twenty-ten, and, and the government paid that back with interest, because that was the right thing to do. And so, you know, I'm not, I just really hope that you'll consider, you know, these options and to increase that benefit, whether it's two percent, two point two percent, whatever the right numbers are. I just hope that you will consider it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Budasi. Jerrilyn Hotea. Aubrey Moore. Pilar Williams. Elizabeth, I'm not even going to attempt that. Duane Dominguez. Anybody else wish to be heard at this point? Anybody else that's in the audience currently wish to, to speak? If not, I really want to thank all of you for coming out. When we did this last year, I think we had two, we had Mr. Murphy and Judge Bredalio. And so, I am so happy that, and, and Chris Budasi, yeah. Chris was here last year. But I really am grateful that you've come out. And it's on both sides, and we now have to try to sit down. Ma'am, come forward.
You know, I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've, we've had, the vice speaker introduced this bill earlier this year. When we had our conversations, actually, a lot of what's being talked about here tonight are, are things that we You know, I want to, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We’ve had, the vice speaker introduced this bill earlier this year. When we had our conversations, actually, a lot of what’s being talked about here tonight are things that we factored into what we provided to the retirement fund since June to consider and to cost out for us, so we can know how much it’s going to be. I mean, all we need to know is how much it’s going to be. And what’s in here is actually a lot of what was said tonight in terms of Social Security perspective only for new employees, for the existing employees creating a contained hybrid option for them, so that they can, they can get the hybrid. And, and then every new employee after that gets Social Security, and then the only thing that we’re trying to reconcile is what the government’s contribution rate is supposed to be. The retirement fund keeps insisting that it’s, you know, 1.6% for the employer and 10.5% for the employee. What we’re trying to find out is, if we were to create more parity, which is kind of what they proposed tonight, more parity between what the government contributes now under your D.C. plan, and what the government would contribute in the future under Social Security, right now, your government contributes 5%. If it’s Social Security in the future, it’s 6.2. But if we just pass this bill, it drops down to 1.6. And so we’re trying to keep parity with the existing contribution rate and keep it somewhat similar to the future contribution rate, so that it’s not all being borne by the employee. And there was some testimony tonight saying that they don’t mind that, but there’s also just some, some employees out there who are borderline on poverty level, where doubling up on their contributions is going to really, really hurt them. So what I’ve asked the retirement fund since June, and what I’m glad Richard was able to kind of give us a ballpark figure on, was if we did go closer to parity, how much would that require from this government? And we’re looking at now a number of $15 million. So Mr. Boudazzi’s testimony was very worthwhile, because he’s basically, he basically gave us various scenarios on how to find that $15 million, which we’ve also been exploring. No, ma’am, because if we, if we make certain commitments in, in our budget process, we can fund this next fiscal year. We can do a pension bond to help drive down that cost additionally. We can also recommit some of the savings that we’ve identified to go elsewhere to actually pay for this, these additional contribution rates. So really, if the legislative will is there, we can pay for this by next fiscal year in the budget. If it’s not there, we can pass this and make the employees eat it. You know, that’s really, for me, as a senator, those are really the two options in front of me. Are we going to, as a legislature, fund this in the budget in FY 2017, or are we going to make the employees pay it? If, if the insistence is that we just do something, the employees are going to be the ones paying for it. If the insistence is that the government needs to have more parity and shoulder more of the burden, then we need to definitely budget for it in FY 2017. The good news, ma’am, is the chairman of this bill, the retirement, is also the chairman of the budget. And you have a lot of senators here tonight who are hearing the comments from the community about us needing to, you know, come up with a solution and maybe find parity, or maybe not, and as a body, we’re going to deliberate that. But speaking for, on my behalf, I’m fully committed to resolving this within the next 12 months. I think that we must, and I don’t think that anything that was said here tonight about the urgency of this is lost at all. So that’s pretty much, at least from my perspective, where we are. How are we going to fund it? Are we going to commit our future revenue to it, which we can? Or are we going to make the employees pay, pay for it? Or are we going to find somewhere in the middle? And that’s, that’s really the work that we have to do at this point.
Thank you very much. Senator? Any other senators wish to make a comment? I am committed to get this on the floor by March, and so that we know exactly how much we’re going to have to set aside in the upcoming budget. If we’re going to fund it in the next budget, we need to know what the plan is going to be. If we put this off until next summer, it won’t be, it won’t be in the budget. And so we’ve got to decide what it’s going to be before March, so that we can, we can plan for it in the budget. So that part, I can tell everybody, one way or another, it’s either going to come out just the way that it is, or with some minor changes to address a couple of other things, but we’re going to have something, because the, the next budget will have something to address this issue. All right? And with that, I thank all the Gov Guam employees for their patience and their attendance tonight. All of the ones that marked support will, it’ll be taken into account, and there were a couple of that marked that they were opposed. I appreciate that. And with that, this committee stands adjourned.